Call the Newport City Council meeting together from Monday, April 17th, 2018. 2017, I'm thinking of the centennial. Just gotta have a centennial meeting. 2017, 6:30 PM. Our members of the council are present. The members include James Johnson, City Clerk Treasurer, and Laura Dogan, our City Manager. The next item would be to approve the minutes of April 3rd, 2017, and I would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
So, motion to be made to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
Okay. Sorry. I think we need to figure out what we want to call Alder People. Because we probably don't want to say Alder Men anymore. And I'm not sure about Alder Persons, definitely not with an apostrophe.
Are you not persons?
Well, we could...
Well, you know what I meant.
Absolutely. And I'm not complaining. I'm just thinking we might want a universal term.
I'll put in whatever you want. I've been writing Alder Men for 20 years. I did try.
I know, thank you, I appreciate it.
There's some, the other term of ours is council. So you've got Alder Men, which is a recognized title, and I don't know what your proposal might be that would be specific to Newport. Because there's lots of boards that have multiple genders, you know, more than one gender. Although it's...
I'll put in, okay, she'll come.
Yeah. It could just be council as well. Council Members is what I use a lot.
Well, I'm not partial to any particular term. I just figure it would be nice if we all used the same one. Persons is all right. People is good. Council is fine.
Which one? Huh?
I said it's not just me.
Well, sure, the rest of them don't care.
Whatever you want to put, I, I'm not partial to anything.
I'll put anything that you truly want me to put. You tell me, pick a word, that's what it'll be. Council Members.
Council Members?
Yeah. You can do it. I've seen one. Come on.
Council Members, words for me. Thank you.
Anything else on the minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Motion here. I just crossed, look at that. Next item, comments by members of the public? For opportunity for anything that's not on the agenda, yes?
Yeah, I've been thinking lately, we've got a new group of council members, or a lot of them are new, or new again. And I was thinking that sometimes the agenda narrows us down a little bit, and the opening comments don't really necessarily let people know that they can come with new ideas. And I thought maybe because you've got a new group, you might want to add just a small section to enable people to talk about new ideas. It might get the public more interested in coming. And I'll give you an example. I'm not vested in this idea at all, but each one of us could be committed to thinking about new ideas and then coming next time with a new idea. And council members could participate in the new idea thing too. So here's an idea, as I say, I'm not vested. And you'll say it's because I have an Italian name that I'm saying this, but I thought, well, you know, here's a simple idea. A friend recently asked me to come play at her bocce ball court that she put in the backyard, a small one. And it turns out that curlers, I never knew that, curlers like to have someplace in the summertime to, I guess, aim at balls and get them separated. I don't know. So, yeah, I played, it was fun. And I thought, well, you know, we could have such a thing in our park here, possibly. Recreation could talk about it. We could see if it costs money. If it costs too much money, we could see if people wanted to contribute, or maybe somebody would volunteer on an off day to build a bocce court. It might have no place in the park. But what I'm suggesting is, we can each come each time we have a meeting, and if somebody has a new idea, we could throw it out, then we could ignore it. But it would be another segment for people to come, express their thoughts, and see where they go. Then people can go away with those thoughts. If they're great, we can build on them. If they're terrible, we can forget them. But it gives us another way to get ideas, new ideas vibrating in the city. So, just a thought.
Thank you.
He was too busy shuffling papers.
Did you have a comment?
Yeah. Said that we weren't unable to hear, you were too busy shuffling papers.
I was listening. Excuse me, ma'am, I was listening. I can hear. I was looking for something that I needed for the meeting, and I wanted to make sure I have it. I can do two things at once. I don't have to look at you in the eye to hear you. I can hear. So, I'm not going to go any farther on that, but I heard the idea, I said thank you. Does any other council members wish to make any comments on her idea?
Well, just to clarify, are you suggesting a change on the written agenda? To make it clearer that new ideas are welcome?
Yes. In other words, in addition to opening comments, we could have a small section that talked about new ideas, and that would give people a chance to come and make them. And it wouldn't have to take very long, you know, you could limit us to a minute or less.
It truly comes under comments by members of the public. That is to allow the public to comment on anything that's not on the agenda and to bring up ideas.
But it doesn't allow you to comment. In other words, it doesn't vest you with the idea that you would go home and every two weeks you would come in and maybe you would have a new idea that you wanted to express. So, you should be included in that thought. If we wanted to still leave it at that, you should be allowed to make comments during opening comments.
Encouragement might be a new and exciting event.
Okay. Thank you.
It's a good question. Actually, I was wondering, as a new council person, councilman?
Council member.
Sorry. Would it be more appropriate for a council member to bring stuff up during the public comment or during the business?
So, the construct of the meeting is to conduct council business. This, we're here to conduct council business. And part of Robert's Rules of Order and the statute on the public meeting law, allow for public comment, is presumed that it's going to be about council business. If a council member wants to bring something on the agenda, they can approach the mayor to see if it's appropriate to have it as an agenda item. So, in terms of council members being able to respond and comments by members of the public, they certainly can. There's nothing that prevents them. But if you want something to move forward as a council agenda item, that has a process to go through which the mayor approves. So, again, comments by members of the public are, I think, it's a right prescribed by statute. It's assumed that it's going to be regarding some aspect of council business, whether it's the agenda at hand or a past agenda, or a new idea, as Ann puts out. And it seems like there's lots of forms that exist locally to allow new ideas, and one in particular is Pam's Newport Rocks, which a lot of city people have gone to Pam to ask for her to post things on our behalf, and she's always complied. So, I think it's a matter of making efficient use of the time that we have available, and to have it surround council business.
If I may interject, new business is for council members to bring up items.
Okay. Thank you.
That is, that is, been on there, new and old business. Old business to follow up on, something that may have been brought up in the past that hasn't been, you know, addressed in a timely manner, and then new business is for council members to bring up new items that aren't on the agenda, that we could bring up under the new business and then maybe address at a future council meeting. That's why we have new business there here, for council members. But as far as comments by members of the public, that is where they can bring up ideas also.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Then we'll move on. The next item is the Vermont Council on Rural Development. And before I introduce Mr. Costello and Ms. Kalowski, I just want to go over a few things that's happened in the last year. If you realize, we just had the one-year anniversary of the EB5, and there's been some who think that the city hasn't done a whole lot in the past year. But just to give a little chronology, the first thing that we did is, we had to take time to fully understand the fallout of that whole announcement from the SEC. It took a little bit of time of the City Manager, myself, and the city, just to evaluate that whole announcement. Then we had to work with the receiver to understand what the whole receivership process meant for the redevelopment of the properties in Newport. First priority being Main Street. We had, we met with the receiver to go over what his process is, and to go move on from there. There was a reevaluation of the current and projected marketing conditions is needed to understand the potential for redevelopment. That is where the city decided to hire, I say Mr. White, but Whitenburg, to evaluate that Main Street property. We did receive a grant from the Hip Housing and Observation Board, also a planning grant to pay for the consultant. But before we could hire the consultant, we had to come up with an RFP, but the RFP had to follow the strict guidelines, if I'm correctly, Laura, from the ACCD, right? They had the guidelines. ACCD is the Agency of Commerce and Community Development. We had to follow their strict guidelines. And so, we chose Whitenburg. And just to let everyone know, they have just barely begun their work, and they're gonna, the next step will be for the city to design a community engagement process, which will provide a larger community with the opportunity to take part in Newport's overall redevelopment. That's just beyond, that's beyond just the downtown block. We want to look at the large picture of the community, and it so happens that Paul Costello and Janet Kalowski approached the city about doing a visit, kind of like, I'm going to let them explain it, but to discuss the future of Newport and the strategy. And so, with that, I'm going to introduce Paul Costello and Janet Kalowski from the Vermont Council on Rural Development. They make a presentation about what a proposed visit that they have planned for the city if the council so chooses.
Should we sit down, or is it okay?
You can stand.
I'll just, thanks. So, you guys speak, I'll go ahead and mic. I will. Yeah. So, I'm Paul Costello, I'm the Executive Director of the Council on Rural Development. We're charged by the federal farm bill to help coordinate state and federal policy for Vermont. We have a board that has the heads of federal programs, about half the governor's cabinet at any one time, Republican or Democrat, it doesn't matter to us, statewide leaders who provide help to rural communities, local folks, lead businesses, and then we're the only organization in Vermont because of that farm bill statute that can have representatives from the congressional offices. But it's a big board. We're charged with helping communities move forward. And we've brought, we've built a process that we've modeled and what people are doing for rural communities all across the country. Where we work with a town that wants to engage more volunteers, wants to look at long-term challenges and line up to move them forward, wants to, wants to build unity around some common goals, wants to build momentum and kind of uplift. We have worked with 55 communities around the state now, everyone from Bennington and Rotland to Richford and St. Johnsbury. The central thing about the way that we work is, our neutrality is sacred to us. We don't think we know what's good for Newport. We don't think we know what's good for Island Pond or St. Johnsbury. You've got to respect local leadership first. That's our first principle. So, we come in and we're listeners, but we also bring a team of 25, 30 executive-level state officials. We get secretaries from state government to facilitate some of our sessions, heads of USDA, really closely tied to the regional planning, regional development folks. We rally the team together from the state side, including federal leadership, to listen, to think, to reflect with the community. But the power is all with the community that put their ideas together on the table. We hold sessions, in general, we'll walk through some of the structure of the process, but we hold sessions to gather information, and then we reflect it back as ideas for action. And we don't try to say, oh, this is the best thing you ought to do, you know, we've got a social engineer platform of what's going to help this town move forward. Instead, we really honestly try to listen and reflect effectively. That said, we run a very disciplined conversation. We're only interested in positive things. We're not interested in the challenges of the past. We're interested in saying, what do you do as you move forward? We've most recently done this with the town of Vernon. In Vernon, a lot of anguish about the collapse of house values, the fear of losing the income from the nuclear plant that supports the school and their recreation programs. A town that's divided in lots of ways because of the pressure that they're all under. And we don't come in thinking, again, we know what's good for Vernon, but we build a civil center to the dialogue to say, everyone in this town is important, everyone has something to add. And once we're in the community, we're listening equally to everyone in the community, we're reflecting back ideas that come from everybody. And then the community chooses to not vote for taxes, or vote for official decisions of the city, or any of that stuff. They vote for the things that they want to see move forward and that they're willing to work together to do. So, we're all about supporting local leadership, helping people line up for action. And in the towns we've served around the state, that has gone everywhere, from a community center that's been developed in Cambridge, an arts council that's been developed in Swanton, to, what are they doing, four-wheelers down in Brighton and Island Pond, building a corridor to get four-wheelers into the center. Again, we don't screen for what we want to see. It's all about what the town is going to benefit from and what people care about the most. So, we love what we do. For us, the kind of conversation that happens here with your city council and people from the community is really fundamental to what makes Vermont special. It's not easy, but we have to respect it and actually cherish it, because democracy is what separates us from a lot of the world. And if we can't make it real in our own communities, and make it strong, and make it active, and make it positive, we're lost. So, we start with a very old-fashioned kind of perspective on what Vermont means, about how we line up together to get good things done, and we run a disciplined process to get us there. So, Janet's going to describe some of the process, and then we'd be glad to take questions from the council.
Yeah, so really quickly, and you all have, first of all, thank you for having us tonight. And you have a handout there that really runs through all the details of the community visit process, and I'll write down more details in terms of the process, and also what other communities have done at the end of this work. But I'm going to do a quick rundown for you of how our process works. So, really, the community visit is a four-month series of public meetings. And we kick things off with a meeting that we call the Steering Committee, but it's a one-time discussion of community leaders and members from all different parts of town. So, we do kind of a cross-sectional analysis to say, you know, who are the folks in town representing all different community groups, community organizations, the school, the faith community? We have students that join us in that council, a representative from the city council, maybe the planning commission, recreation. We look at all the different parts of Newport, and we say, who should be joining us in this conversation? That group really helps us to frame the process upfront. Like Paul said, we don't know what's best for Newport, we don't know what the issues and opportunities are in this community. So, that's an opportunity for us to learn, what should the community be talking about? What should be on the table for discussion? So, we bring those folks together, and we have a conversation about the overarching themes that the community would like to discuss, and those become topics for community forums later in the process. And it's anything from, it might be transportation, economic development, education, the future of our schools, community communication and connection, whatever it might be for that community, we brainstorm that together as a group. And that group also helps us to think a little bit about logistics and an invitation process to make sure that everyone in the community is invited to, because nobody owns this discussion, and we want to make sure that everyone has an invitation to get involved. So, between the Steering Committee, that's a one-time meeting, that group kind of dissolves afterwards, and then everyone becomes equals in the process from there. Between that first meeting and a month later, we basically do a deep invitation process to everyone in the community. We send out, we work with the city to send out a letter to everyone in the city, we send out a flyer with every kid in the school, bookmarks in every book that's leaving the library, front porch forum, you know, it's really, we want everyone to hear it five times, basically, so that everyone feels they can join the conversation. And we gear up for, we have, the Steering Committee that we bring together makes phone calls. You know, we've had some towns where everybody in town gets a phone call inviting them to get involved. And that gears up for the first big community discussion, and we call that Community Visit Day. And that's really kind of the wide end of the funnel. It's a brainstorming process, but it's a work session. So, we take those forum topics that were identified in the Steering Committee, and those become forum discussions throughout the day. Probably nine forums, they all happen in one day. Folks come out, we have skilled facilitators that lead a conversation, saying, what are the assets in transportation in Newport? What are the challenges? But the most important part of that conversation is we move towards, well, what are the action items? What can be done, and what's next? And not necessarily what can the council do, or what can the City Manager do, it's really about what can the community do? What can residents in Newport take on for the future of the town? We build a list of potential action items. The Community Visit Day is also that day that we invite the visiting team. We look at, what are the topics the Steering Committee chose? If it's transportation, we invite the Secretary of Transportation to come and join us for the day. If it's economic development, we invite heads of USDA, Rural Development, we invite the Secretary of Commerce and members of all the congressional offices to join for the day, not to tell the community what to do. We tell them, it's not a day for giving speeches or talking about your programs. They listen. And they are asked to wait until the end of the meeting, and then they have the opportunity to share some reflections on what they've heard. They're with us for the whole day. The Community Visit Day is also a bit of a celebration. It's hard work, but we also have a community dinner, and the community comes together and celebrates this kind of process that the community is embarking on, and gets to mingle and network with each other and with this visiting team that's in town to really get a chance to connect around what issues face the future of Newport. From there, we end up, we have scribes capturing all the notes, we end up with like 20 to 30 pages of dense notes. And Paul and I do a kind of cluster analysis of all the ideas coming out of the day. Because you might have an idea that's shared in the transportation forum, and you might have an idea that's shared in the economic development forum, and there might be some connections there. And we do an analysis to say, what are those big ideas, those action ideas that are coming out of the conversation? And a month later, we come back to the community, we invite everyone together again through that invitation process, and we put all those ideas up on the wall. So, we might have 15 to 20 ideas, and we review them together as a community. We walk through a process for folks to stand up and champion their best ideas for action. We say, what are the most actionable, what are the most doable, and what do folks want to sign up to move forward for the future of the town? And we go through a voting process to end up with the top three to five ideas that the community wants to take on. From there, at the end of that meeting, we say, all right, these are the priorities the community's chosen. We put out task force signup sheet, so people can sign their name and say, yeah, I'd be interested in working on this. We don't have to, there's no requirement to volunteer, but the opportunity is there to sign on. The final step in the process is what we call Resource Day. And that's where, it essentially serves as a first meeting of these new task forces that have signed up. So, they come together and we build an action plan. So, we have, again, facilitated conversations where we say, what are the first five action steps we need to take to move this priority forward as a group? And what are a list of resources that can help us to get those things done? At this stage, we bring with us another team to the community to provide some support, and we call this the Resource Team. The visiting team in the beginning kind of has that more visionary perspective. For the Resource Team, we bring folks like NVDA, like the Vermont Community Foundation, folks that we say, in this priority area, who are the other community leaders in other towns in Vermont who have done this work that could provide some insight? Who are the folks that might have funding that could offer to a community initiative like this? And who are the folks that could provide some technical assistance? You know, we have, in St. Johnsbury, for example, NVDA, the Northeastern Vermont Development Association, they have staff that have basically been staffing these task forces that formed in St. Johnsbury, and they've been really key to helping with grant writing, helping to find funding, and helping to kind of walk through those action steps for what's next. So, we come out of this process with action plans, these concrete step-by-step action plans that the community has decided on, and we compile them into a final report. We did bring sample reports that we're happy to share, but it's a final report that captures everything in the process. So, all those notes from Community Visit Day, all of the action ideas that were on the wall, nothing's lost in the process. The community makes decisions about what they're prioritizing, what they're going to focus on for next steps, but it's all captured there to show, you know, this is the plan that we see for the future of Newport, and also all of the contact information for the visiting team, for the Resource Team, because not only have they agreed to come and provide their support, they've offered themselves as a resource to the town, to the city. And now, when they're contacted, they know they've been plugged in with this process, and they can help to connect to resources to help succeed. And so, this is made available to the community following the process. So, it's really about coming together as a community, finding what those common initiatives are going to be, but also uniting and engaging residents to take action on the community side of priorities.
So, at this point, we, we're working in partnership with the Vermont Community Foundation. They're particularly interested in the outcomes that come from the community. There's no guarantee from our process that there's funding that comes, though we've had some towns like Johnson do a $12 million Streets Gate redevelopment. And at the same time, they did something that didn't cost anyone anything. They built a Thursday Night Live party on the Green that united the veterans groups, the high school kids, the arts group, the college people, all working to have one event that unites people across all those lines in the community. But one of the things that people do with the Community Visit Report is, they come out of the process with a sidewalk repair that the city wants to work on, and they attach this to the back of their request to the Secretary of Transportation, who was just in town, was listening to all that, is a really good support for, for follow-up support. We also serve as a resource referral agency for every community that we work with, and we watch what's going on, and we think about ways we can help. We're in Montpelier, we're pretty connected to all the state, federal resources that are there, and we, you know, for us, it's all about helping a community go from a community with a list of 40 things you might want to do, or 40 problems, to the three or four things that the community is ready to stand for and work to make happen, and become something of a squeaky wheel with state and federal resources to get things done. Most projects aren't really town or city projects, they're, they become nonprofits. Like in Crasberry, where we just were a group of people, we're looking at a number of different issues, and they came to the need for, the fact that there was no real daycare in town, and they decided they were going to build one together. And so, a team of mothers really got together, and they framed out a structure for it, they went after state resources, and the whole momentum of the community was with them, and they got a $160,000 grant that's helping them buy a building and kick it off. So, again, no guarantees, because it's all about local leadership, there's no magic. But for us, the trick is, you know, we're very patriotic about communities, and we see that Washington DC isn't coming with all the answers to pick up a community, and neither is Montpelier. It's all about, they respond. They're better at responding than they are at leading. Towns that pull it together and have a framework and have people working together in a common direction are the towns that get the resources from the state and the faith. And we are here interested in whether this process would work in Newport, but we aren't trying to sell it. We're very much in demand. It clearly costs about $40,000 to put one of these on. It's really intensive in terms of our time. And we want to bring this process where it can be useful. But everybody knows how important Newport is. You know, Newport is like the jewel in northern Vermont. It's one of the most beautiful places, one of the most important places for our recreation economy. It's a huge crossroads for everyone. It's a huge crossroads for everyone in Vermont. So we care about Newport and if we could be of use, we'd be interested. For us, we would require a letter inviting the process that we then take back to our board and see if our board was wanting to prioritize Newport at this time. But I think that, that all of Vermont wants to see Newport prosper into the future. And so we're very interested in this community. A lot of any questions from the City Council? I'm sorry to go so long.
No, no, that's no problem. The event, the initial event, is that held like on a weekend day, like a Saturday or held in the evening? And then you said the day-long event. Is that, so I was just questioning the initial one and then the day-long event, is that held on a weekday or a week, like a Saturday?
The steering committee is always in the evening. The way that the, it's kind of challenging with the big, long Community Visit Day. What we tend to do is bring our team to the town like at 1:30 and give them a late lunch and then start sessions at about 2:30 and go till 8:30 at night. So we know that no one, that some people can't make a 2:30 meeting. We look really carefully at what sessions would happen at different times, knowing that there's some that are probably going to be really crucially important to a lot of people and some may be smaller and maybe people, you know, if it was a, you know, if it had to do with a new fire station, maybe you'd hold a session at the fire department and it'd be okay to have it at 2:30. So we try to frame out a way, but partly it's just because of the visiting team. We wouldn't be able to get, it's, it's a lot of work to get 30 executive level state and federal officials to come and to get them to add it on to their week. We're making them, you know, stay, basically, they won't get home till midnight. And so it's, it's hard to pull it off on a weekend.
And also, just to add really quick to that is that if somebody sends me a note and says, I can't make it to the transportation discussion at 2:30, I say, come and share your ideas at the evening discussion, because all ideas are welcome and usually they connect in some way to the themes. There's always opportunities.
Okay. And then you mentioned, it costs around $40,000, but really the only cost to the city would be the mailing.
Right.
And then the community dinner.
Yeah, we ask the community.
Dinner and the mailing.
Yeah.
But the, but the whole project costs, the whole thing costs around $40,000, but we really would only be doing the mailing to, this, if we were to go forward with this, you were looking at, if your board approved it, it would be in the fall, like say September would be the kickoff?
Yeah, that's right.
September would be the kickoff?
Probably this September would be the steering committee?
Probably, kicking off with the community event in October.
And working through the fall and to December being done, probably.
Just a little history, they, Paul, I think, had approached us several months ago, but we didn't think it was quite right, right, good timing at the time, because the legislature had set money aside and in that bill that set money aside for Newport, they had recommended a visit by the Vermont Council on Urban Development.
We had nothing to do with it.
No, 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 I know, but I'm, but I'm getting at it, it's, but the time, it, just the timing didn't seem right, but now it does for the fall. It just seems, because we've got Whitenburg doing their initial business analysis for the city of Main Street, their market analysis, business analysis, and having your group come in and doing like the visioning for the overall, because Whitenburg is focused just over here, pretty much.
Yeah.
And having them come in and do the visioning.
Yeah.
The visioning of the whole city would be, I think, the timing is, timing is perfect.
We're, we're very sensitive to, to the fact that there is a contract of working on that particular project and want to not, you know, get in the way of that or, you know, be, become an obstruction to, to the progress of the city.
Other council members with a question? Mr. Wilson?
Well, not a question, but I recently was able to participate in their Brighton Community Visit, which was held last fall and as during, I mean, as part of my day job. And it has been a phenomenal, fantastic process and the work that has evolved out of their visit is beyond anything that I would have expected. So I, I have a really good personal experience with them.
Anything from anybody else? Any questions for the group?
I know Paul from a way back, so I have a good personal experience with him too. But there, I mean, we do have, there are, there are so many groups working on like small parts of this broader thing. And especially in that timetable, I'm, I'm involved with a few of them, especially on that kind of timetable, this seemed like the, the, the people with the resources and the connections to do the big picture thing seems like, seems like the thing that's missing. I would just put that forward, having gone to so many small part of the problem meetings over the last year or so, that, the, I mean, they're, they're the folks with the, with the big picture resources and the big picture vision, so.
And getting everybody with all the, the small groups together. That's where I thought would be, the timing was perfect, because we do have a lot of little groups working on various things and they're, they can all be coordinated under the one.
And folks who, I mean, everyone knows, know what they're doing and so.
No, I've been, I went to one of their sessions at the Goodrich and it's very well facilitated and very well-run and organized and so. Yes?
I have a question. About four or five years ago, the Orton Foundation came in and they did something a bit comparable to what you're talking about. What I, what I found is that things fizzled and there wasn't a lot that we wound up getting in the end out of what was done. And so what I'd really like to hear from you is how you support us after those first four months to keep prodding us to move forward?
I'll save some of that for Jenna, but the, the Orton Foundation process is, is a great process. It's more framed around what they call place-making, which is sort of telling the story of your community, which could have a unifying effect. But they're, they're much less project-driven and they're not deliberately trying to set an action plan with the community and bring resources to it. That said, there's no guarantee in any of this stuff that your town is going to hit a home run. Every town is really different and we don't, we don't see it as a cookie cutter. We don't start with similar issues. We say, what should we start with? And, and not every single task force that we've ever done has succeeded. But we've never had a town that regretted the process, as far as we know. We've never had a town that didn't do some good work. So that's about all the promise there can be, except that we can list towns that have done a lot of wonderful things. And so it's, it's really, I guess it's not us. It's, it's the community and it's the community standing up and then moving things forward. But Jenna can talk a little bit about our follow-up.
Yeah, just really quickly, you know, like Paul's describing, we do step back at the end of the process and this really is about engaging the community and kind of helping to facilitate, have that, we provide that platform for initial facilitated discussion, but then it's about the community stepping up and leading on the initiatives. But we do work with the community to set up a leadership structure. We work early on to identify kind of a local balanced leader and we call them a chairperson of the process that can work with us as a kind of point person in the community. And they help us and, you know, we talk with community members to identify who is the right person to step up as task force leaders in these new committees. We do offer, if it's useful, some help in, once the task force chairs are identified, we can come together and have discussions on, you know, next steps and effective leadership skills if it's helpful. And some communities, they say, no, we don't need it, we're ready to go, but we're there to help. And then we can offer some follow-up. I check in with communities at six months and kind of say, how are things going? Are there ways we can help? Are there connections we can help make? What do you need from us at that point? And then we check in again at a year and, and in an ongoing way. We're always there to bounce ideas off of. But, but we really leave it in the hands of the community to, to move things forward following the visit and then we're, we're able to help when we can.
Yeah, and I can just say, as, as NVDA, we've done a lot of work to support the work of the council and the communities that, that we've worked with. You know, there are a lot of great ideas that come out of this visiting, this, this community visit. And there can be a lot of energy at the meetings, but unless the community takes this on and engages and, and works through the process, if an idea fizzles, it's because the community has really decided in one way or another that they're not really pushing forward the idea. So the thing about this process is that it is truly a community engagement process. The leadership must come from within the community. It's not a top-down process where there's a list of action items that then comes to the city to do. This is a process by which community members come together to make things happen and seek out resources and go to the resource teams. So if we truly as a community want certain things to happen, we work to make them happen. So we've seen this time and again in various communities, the success of these projects, as Julie mentions, I mean, she saw this firsthand up in Brighton. They're just going gangbusters up there. And these are the community members doing this, not, you know, not appointed leadership. So it's, it's really a wonderful way to get grassroots energy, innovation, ideas rolling and, and get that energy around it and then have people step into roles to create what we want to see in our communities.
Great. Anything then, at this time, would the council like to make, we have a letter that was drafted to request the visit from the VCRD. Someone like to make a motion to have me sign that letter?
There's one typo.
There's a typo in the letter?
Newport City Older Man. It's only one, it should be older man. We're going to go with older.
Okay.
No, nothing. Make a motion with that correction.
Or you can change it to council. Change it to council, Laura.
Newport City Council members?
Make a motion, we authorize the mayor to correct and then sign this letter and mail it out.
I'll second that.
So a motion has been made and seconded. Any other discussion on the letter other than the typo or the correction? Then, that's okay, no, it's true. Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, motion carries. Laura will come in and sign a corrected copy and we'll mail it out.
Okay. Wonderful to see you all.
Great, thank you. So thank you for, thank you for coming and look forward to, hopefully your board giving a positive go-ahead.
Well, I think it's safe to say that everyone cares a lot about Newport, so we'd like to bring that to a focal point.
Great.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Moving on, the next item, event planning, Week of the Young Child Parade.
Everybody, so in your packet for this week, you found a large event application from Diane Nichols Fleming at the North Country Supervisor Union. They are hoping to run their Week of the, Week of the Young Child Celebration. Again, a lot of you guys are probably familiar with this. It's the parade that goes through town with all of the kids. They start at the gateway and then end up at Gardner Park. They have a lot of children's activities there, a lot of music-based gaming, pretty ice cream for the kids. It's basically a, an awareness event for early childhood programs around town, so pre-schools, head starts, things like that. It's been running in the community for many years, long before I got here. It's a great event and they are looking to host that again on the fourth. So requesting approval from council. You also found in your packet an invoice, this is something that's new, is part of our field and facility use process that we're now going through, which is kind of putting numbers on all of these things that are coming through. You probably haven't seen something like this before. So that was submitted so that you can kind of see and, and we can see as a department what the, the dollar figure is and the impact is on our department. So that is what's on the invoice. I also made a recommendation on behalf of the Rec Department about the fees and that we waived the support for the parade, but asked them to contribute the field use rental, $37.50. That's new to them. In the past, this has been totally free for them. So Martha is actually here from Building Bright Futures. She would like to just talk a little bit about the event, so come on up if you want to come and see it.
I don't know that I have much to add.
You want to give a little bit of history about the event and why it's important?
Yeah, so I'm Martha Breakway. I'm the Building Bright Futures Regional Coordinator for Orleans and Northern Essex. So our community partners have been hosting the parade for the Week of the Young Child for about 20 years. It's, you're headed by the Supervisor Union, Early Childhood Program. So usually Diane Nichols Fleming, as you would see here. She wasn't available today, so she asked me to, to fill in. We've had, the last few years, we've had 400 to 500 kids and caregivers participate in the parade. It's a fun day. They start up up here and they parade down to the park where we have ice cream and activities and resources and give away books and just play and then kids go home. If in the event of rain, I know in the past it has been canceled due to rain or we're crossing our fingers, not snow. But I think that we work with the Rec Department to have a raining location here if we do have inclement weather, which will never happen. So I think that's about it. As Jessica said, that it has been, there has been no cost to the Building Bright Futures Regional Council in the past to, to hold this event. So we didn't budget for the $37. Obviously that's not going to be a deal breaker. We're working that it can get paid fair and understand that it is a burden just to have that many people in the space on a day is going to create some amount of work. So we'll leave that up to you guys. And if you have any other questions? Oh, and this year, we're also not just holding the parade, but on the same day, we're hosting a screening of the film Resilience, which is some work coming out of the adverse childhood experiences study and the impact of toxic stress on early childhood on the brain and leading to impacts on physical health development across the lifespan. So it's going to be an all-day event, a parade in the morning and then the screening of Resilience in the evening. But it's not going to be related to this request, that's just an FYI. It'll be busy day.
Now, do you, usually they just go out half of Main Street?
Yes, and the traffic will, it's our typical, it's our typical parade group. So we do have traffic running. We coordinate with DPW and the Police Department to do that parade group. We have flaggers out there to make sure everyone stays safe, but there will be traffic running alongside the parade just down by River Road Square there.
So we're not closing Main Street completely?
No.
Which we haven't done in the past anyway. Usually been half. I would just.
I thought there was a request this year to close the whole street because there was some safety concerns with little kids running into ongoing traffic. But again, I wasn't part of that doing the application, so I don't know what's possible.
I'll have to double-check with Andy, but what came?
We've got the chief here.
Main Street from Second Street down to Common 3th Street will be completely shut off during portion of the parade, however, it will be on alternate a traffic route around. And that portion usually stays closed for no more than 15 minutes for this particular event.
Okay. I wish I'd thought of it because I knew there'd been safety concerns with half the street being open and cars and with the kids. And so that's why I wanted to, I was very sad.
Yeah, I think that's part of that will be, you know, the coordinators and our job as the parade group. But we haven't closed the streets down for the parade in, in, in a few years now, but I requested the business and after we've done this new parade group that we seem to have running pretty smoothly, so I think after we can probably keep the, we could have saved the town.
Let's see, you're using, okay, you're using the Police Department and you're using the CIR, right?
Well, we were hoping to have a CIR to come in, but they have another obligation that day, so they won't be able to make it. So those figures factor in the impact on DPW and the Police Department based on people that'll be there. The Rec Department will be on hand too to do some of the flagging and stuff, so. But it's a parade group, it's well-known, we've run it several times, so I hope to see that being an issue.
Okay. Any other questions from council members?
Mr. Wilson? When I saw this and we've been doing this for free for all these years, now it's a nominal fee of $37. So I called the Supervisor Union today, left my message, but she never returned the call. Can they afford it? But I never got an answer back. But if we start this, are we not going to do this now? When the, we have the Memorial Day Parade, when we have other veterans' parades and so, are we going to be billing them now this nominal fee for green space, trash? I mean, everybody generates, are we going to start charging all these organizations?
The, basically what, you know, kind of since I stepped in here, I've noticed that there's a lot of additional events that are, and there's more coming all the time. People want to host these parades and these events and they're asking the Rec Department for help, which is great. And we certainly walk these things into town, but it's, all of the impact, whether it's for time for setup, you know, impact on bathrooms, all of that stuff, it comes at a cost for the city. At some point, we have to. At some point, we have to be evaluating the numbers that are attached for that. I'm going to be, you know, the three of us will work together to make a recommendation to council on what we see as fair based on a number of factors, and basically be an impact above and beyond our normal routine. So we will make a recommendation, and then if the organization would like to ask for the fees to be waived, then we're basically asking them to come ask you guys, so.
Well, the fee for Memorial Day may not be thirty-seven dollars.
It depends on what the field use is, and we use our rates.
Well, we use the War Memorial, that's it.
Right.
From now on.
So when that event application comes through, I'll take it.
It's just fast, is this, we're changing the policy now?
We are, we're going to be looking at everything.
And we're going to change the policy. We can't just say, okay, we love the veterans, so we're not going to charge them.
Right.
It's got to be across the board. They all pay twenty bucks.
Veterans, everybody's going to be charged.
Yeah. Yeah.
I like, what I like is the breakdown of what it really costs the city.
Yeah.
Because we didn't have that in the past. And with all these events, knowing the true cost of what, you know, Public Works, PD, your department, it's nice to see this breakdown of what the cost is.
It's important for us to see, but it's also important for the user to see what the value is and that they're getting, because they're not always necessarily aware of the impact, so.
Right.
It's good for them to know kind of what they're asking for.
Okay.
What is the estimated cost for this parade?
Eight-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars and fifty cents.
That's the combination of a damage deposit and the field use, but the parade itself, the support from the city is about eight-hundred dollars with the three departments in there. The other fees are for green space and...
Right. Okay, anything from council members? We need a motion.
I'm not a fan of going from doing things for free to suddenly charging. I would anticipate that it would be problematic in the future as different events come forth and the price might vary. Are you thinking that with future applications, you might waive the entire thing, or are you looking to always have a face?
So this, you know, the parade, for these guys, they've been doing it for so long, and it's a parade route that is very well-known for us, and they're very good organizers, they're very cooperative. So a lot, if it was something new that came in, I think that we would probably suggest the full fee for them, depending on what it was for. We also look at profit versus nonprofit. And, you know, basically, it's the impact on us. So is this, is this a brand-new thing that we have to invent the wheel on and figure out what we're going to do, and it's going to take time above what we've already been doing? Or is this a group that's, you know, come in, they're very organized, they work well with us, we've done it several times in the past, and it runs, you know, like clockwork, and it's not as much of an impact on us? So the field use and facilities are all based on rates that you guys have set in the past and the council has set for us, so that's where those numbers come from. And the rest of these, it comes from, so we know what the parade costs this, and that is the same price going forward. So we will make a recommendation based on a number of factors. If the hosts, you know, would like to ask for other fees to be waived for whatever reason that may be, then they'll come to you guys and ask permission. So it's really going to come down to what you guys decide, you know, based on a number of factors, and we can, we'll certainly present that to you, make a recommendation, and then you guys can kind of decide. Does that make sense, does that answer your question?
It does.
Okay.
Anything else then? I, because they recommended, Jessica recommended that we waive everything but the thirty-seven fifty. I would go along with her recommendation as far as that.
And Diane did agree that that was a minimal fee from, you know, certainly what the value is, and that that is totally understandable. Her only thing was that they hadn't funded that for this year, but, you know.
I'm not sure how big her budget is, but thirty-seven fifty, personally, I don't think would be hard to come up with.
And I think she agrees.
No, because I think they got a fairly, fairly good-sized budget. I'm sure they could find thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents in it, since we're waiving...
I think between our community partners, we can absolutely come up with a thirty-seven dollars. I think the bigger impact, I think Julie raised the point, just be mindful of as this change happens, you know, the whole eight-hundred dollars, that would be a very challenging for us to come up with.
Right.
So as we, as this new practice goes into place, just getting people, you know, people budget, make their budgets, and we're a pretty small, nonprofit, collaborative group in the community, and so make our budgets a year ahead, so it's good for people to know a year ahead that changes are happening. But we can absolutely...
Well, I do agree with seeing a breakdown. We have authority to waive it, but I really like seeing this true cost to the city, because for years, we didn't know the true cost of all these events, and we had more and more people coming to us wanting us to put on events and, you know, parades and, well, how come the city can't do this? And, you know, well, now we know what the costs, some of the costs are, and I think it's good to have that breakdown. I really do. Not to mean we're going to, if the council can waive it, I recommend we just go with the recreation department's recommendation. Whatever the council chooses as far as their motion to, for the event, we would need a motion to approve this request.
I'll make that motion. I move to approve the request, including the recreation department's recommendations on waivers.
I'll second that.
So a motion been made and seconded. So we waive the eight-twenty-five, we keep the forty-seven. So a motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion on it?
Yes. Thinking about the nonprofits that I've worked with in the past, not knowing the cost of an event until a few weeks before the event, when you get permission from council, it'd be really problematic. So I'm fine with how this is being done, but I think in the future, we really need to consider the impact on whether or not a group that wants to celebrate young children or a veterans' group, how are they going to plan ahead if they won't know what the council is going to waive?
So just a little background that you guys probably don't know, the procedure that we go through now with our field and facility use is that anyone that wants to do anything on any of our fields or facilities fills out one of these applications. As soon as we receive this, we look through it and then create this invoice and send this along to them and say, this is what the cost is for your event if you decide that you want to host it. You know, if you decide, if these fees are not... This first year is going to be a little bit hairy for everybody, but we're going to, we've got to train everyone kind of in the right direction. So again, that's a council decision. If somebody comes in and says, whoa, this is eight-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars and we've never paid anything, you guys can certainly weigh that into your decision. And we will recommend accordingly, but, so it's not, you know, we're not going to have people come in here and hold them upside down, shake coins out of their pockets or anything. We got to kind of learn everybody in the right direction, so. But as soon as they submit their event application to host at our field, which should hopefully be one of the first things that they're doing, to make sure that they have the space available, look at that information and be able to do what they want with it.
And what's the, like, how far in advance do you require the application to be sent?
That is kind of on the event planner. If I was planning a large event, I would do that as far in advance as I could to make sure I had the space to host my event before I was...
I think that's just a catch for people that have been doing this event year after year after year after year. It's just like, oh, that just walks me check a couple weeks in, I assume. That, like you said, the first year will be a learning curve.
That's right.
Okay, anything else?
So just to be clear, so it sounds like what you're saying is that if this had been in place earlier, when Diane Nichols Fleming had submitted this application, she got the invoice for eight-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars, she would have to anticipate that they would have to come up with that whole amount, because the council might not waive it.
Well, we can ask council as early on as we want to. If she had submitted this, you know, six months ago, we would have put it on the agenda sooner for you guys and would have had a decision for her sooner. We can go on pretty much as soon as the event application comes in, so. But Diane will know next year, you know, that this is what it looks like, based on the past, we've made a recommendation to waive it, and she can do with that as she pleases in her planning.
But I think, I think it's good for everybody to see the cost of the city, you know, whether you're a nonprofit or a for-profit. Everything how that impacts at Public Works and Police is a cost to the city taxpayers, and I think it's good that these groups see the cost, so they understand what the city, you know, has to deal with, because we have tough budgets like all the nonprofits, and I really do, I think it's good for them to see the cost of these events. And so I, I'm really pleased that they're showing the cost. Doesn't mean that we won't waive it, but I think it's just for future...
Right, these events have always costed this, it's just we haven't seen that.
You haven't seen it, right. And I know in the past, the council had started asking for the true cost of these events, to see what they really cost, and we had made that request in the past. We originally didn't even have this document to actually plan the event. It used to be they write it out on a piece of paper. We never even had a, a formal application procedure for a parade or for an event, and now we do. And so we're getting there by baby steps, but it's, I think, in the positive direction. Mr. Schmidt?
Jessica, how did you come up with these figures, or how department heads come up with the figures? Are these based on one-hour blocks, or what is that? Because you've got one.
These are figures that were in place before I kind of stepped into my position. Again, that when Andy calculated these out, we took both, not materials, but labor for the people and then any resources that it took. So for instance, for the parade, we have a signed package that we put out with DPW, so new factors and some usage of that and stuff. So in order to get that breakdown, I'd have to check with Andy, but...
I can tell you that it's an all-hands-on-deck procedure. So you've got every single person at Public Works that day who's participating in this for a period of time before the parade starts, and then there's teardown after that. You have your parade police support, which does the same thing. So they're setting up the route, they're blocking off the traffic, they're escorting people down, and Parks and Rec is an all-hands-on-deck. Last year, I was one of the flaggers. I didn't charge. But it's, this is a tremendous event, and you have that many kids that are showing up. The city's not going to take any chance. We're not going to take any risk of liability for the obvious reasons. So this is an all-hands-on-deck process.
Remember that, because we do have events where we have officers that work half a day or a good share of the day. Obviously, that cost would be changed accordingly. You don't have a flat fee for the entire day.
We have a flat fee for officers.
We have a flat fee of fifty dollars now per officer, per hour. The union contract states a minimum of a two-hour call-out. The problem with not addressing additional staff for an event like this is I can say, well, we have four guys on that day, May fourth, this weekday, we already have four guys on, no problem. So I go and I stage my four guys in the parade route. Now we get a domestic assault that occurs at the same time as the parade, and I have to break two of those hours and those officers away. I've got six-hundred kids in the road, and I've got nobody standing underneath the traffic, like qualified to direct traffic at an intersection pursuant to state law, yada, yada, yada. That's where the police department has issue with staffing concerns. I will tell you that far and away, of all the events that we do, this is the police department, one of our favorite. This is the best opportunity we get to interface with the children all year, and we love it. I just, I can't commend Jessica enough to get the ball rolling with just explaining that there is a burden upon the city services to do so. Having said that, I would volunteer my time to do this particular event, I like it that much.
Thank you. Okay.
My concern, I think your concern, you're going to have everybody coming in that gets one of those, coming in to ask the fees to be waived.
Well, this is for large applications, which you guys, we're submitting to you guys for approvals too.
I understand that. My concern is for the veteran groups in towns. We have two, they're fighting for survival every day, just to stay open. And, you know, this, in particular, Memorial Day Parade, been going on since the city was founded in nineteen-eighteen, every Memorial Day. And all of a sudden, they're going to get an invoice that says eight-hundred dollars, and they look at it and say, you know, that ends us. They're going to be in there asking to have that fee waived.
I just, I want to be clear about the process that Jess has used, and there's a lot of conversation between the applicant and Jess's process, so they know what to expect. It's not like this is a cold-hearted thing. There is a lot of interaction back and forth. And what you're describing is why Jess needs to be accountable to the members, and the people who are requesting waiver of fees have a right to do that. There's nothing in this process that precludes them from doing that. So everybody is subjected to the same process, everybody's treated the same, and how they choose to make the presentation to you is just, that's why we have this process in place, and that's why this is coming before the council to make those decisions. So it's not going to preclude the veterans from being able to have their parade. What it will is it will subject them to the same accountability, the same knowledge, the same awareness, so they can come in and make an educated presentation.
That's fine, until the council waives the fee for one group and not the next. But then you got a problem.
We hope that people will appreciate, understanding the skin of the game.
I'm just saying, Laura, that's exactly what Julie was saying. You're waiving for one and not the next, so you got a big problem on that.
We have a big problem, and I think if you say yes to all without...
And I'm more concerned about having, without a solid process in place and some group doing damage to something or other, and then trying to build up for that afterwards.
And you also have a question about for-profit versus not-for-profit. So you've got all these dynamics that are going to change. It's going to be a case-by-case decision, and then once you get your foundation built, you can probably develop more policy about it. You've got to start somewhere. I mean, I was shocked when I said...
I don't have a plan where you start.
Yeah? Eight-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars.
I'm looking down the road.
Yeah.
And we'll have to outreach, obviously, everyone we know, all the groups we know that do these things.
I wonder if we might vote on, on this particular request, but then revisit building the process in a way that makes sense to everybody.
I think that revisit would be asked coming before the council to, with a proposal. Have you guys decided? Revisiting it, starting from scratch.
Quiet.
Okay. So we do have a motion on the floor, and it was seconded.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. And the motion was to go along with the, basically go along with the recommendation from the rec department to waive eight-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars of the fee, so the balance would be thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. And so, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Appreciate being a giddy pick for the flaggers. And if any of you would to join us, you want to fly a couple more feet, want a popcorn?
I'll be.
Thank you, Martha.
Thank you. The next item is the Planning Commission Candidate Recommendation. We have someone who's going to speak, address the recommendation, because I don't believe we received any memo on it.
Mr. Mayor, two weeks ago tomorrow, we interviewed four candidates, and deliberated, and our choice out of the four was Ruth Sprawl. And you should have gotten a memo through Charlie, I'm sorry if you didn't. And as it turned out, Mr. Morgan was a relative of mine, I did not vote. It was unanimous among the other three members.
Okay. So we have a candidate put forward by the Planning Commission? Any questions or comments, or then we would need a motion to accept their recommendation?
Really tough question. Could you spell the name of the candidate?
S, Ruth, S-P-R-O-U-L, the one with two L's.
Two L's.
Two L's, I knew it. S-P-R-O-U-L-L. Ruth Sprawl.
Mr. Mayor, I will make the motion that we go along with the Planning Commission's recommendation, that Ruth Sprawl, a new member of the committee.
Motion is made, is there a second?
A second.
Second made by Mr. Schmidt, second by Mr. Wilson. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question on the dole. I know this came out of the Planning Commission meeting, the minute. The only thing we don't know is, is this two years, three years, one year?
Yeah.
And when we did our appointments, I believe those were three-year-ons.
So it's actually Charlie's term, because Charlie resigned. So Ruth is filling Charles Elliott's remaining term. Mr. Johnson may be able to help him more than I can, but I believe that... Mr. Johnson may be able to help him more than I can, but I believe this is a couple years' worth.
Okay. No, I just didn't know how long should be... Okay.
You can add in, okay. Okay, and so, motion made and seconded. Any other discussion on the motion? In hearing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. The next item, Certificate of Occupancy Fee from Charlie Elliott.
I'm ready to start implementing the certificate of occupancy. You approve, uh, through the bylaw change process. Uh, the actual certificate, what I'm recommending for a fee is thirty dollars for the fee. If someone needs a temporary certificate, because all of the work isn't done and they're moving in, we would charge them fifteen dollars plus ten dollars per month up to twelve months. Derby charges more than this. Uh, we currently charge seventy dollars for the permit. I figure well to thirty, bring the total of the two up to one hundred. Uh, and then thirty dollars, the amount of time I would envision it would take for me to do a certificate of occupancy, which is publicly covered.
I'm interrupting. I know you briefed the old council about what this was all about. But there's three new members that don't even know, really, I don't believe what this is about. So, if you could re-explain to all of us again what this form is all about, and three, three new members don't know what it is. I didn't mean to throw your curve there, but...
Okay. The certificate of occupancy, currently, everybody's, well, you have a building permit for you to build. Uh, other municipalities in the state, and the state allows for also a certi, a certificate of occupancy. The certificate of occupancy comes in when you've built your property. And it's a certificate that, once it's built, uh, then will allow you to move in and occupy it. Uh, the things that we look at is, one, did you comply with all the zoning requirements? Uh, and we get down through, the state of Vermont requires us to make sure that you have a certificate from your building contractor that meets energy standards. Uh, if there are other state permits involved in commercial properties, you need a certificate of occupancy from the state fire marshal. Uh, also, if you needed, say, Act 250, Lake Shore permits, et cetera, we checked to make sure you had them. The purpose of that is, we don't want to do something in the city that people use to try to make a hand run on state requirements. We're supposed to, uh, kind of meet in the middle, if you will. Legally, if you don't, and we issue a permit or a certificate, it's automatically voided legally. So, we do, we'll be checking down through for that type of thing. Uh, also, for the city, make sure that you did have, get your water allocation and sewer, taken care of driveway drainage and other conditions that provided a public works group. Uh, we historically have problems. People move in, start using water. Nobody knows it in there, so nobody bills them the water. I've also been having, since I've been zoning administrator, people who lease properties are being denied financial assistance from their financial institution unless they have a certificate of occupancy from the municipality or other documents, say, in them legally occupying a property. So, there's a variety of issues that we have decided to go ahead and join other communities in having one. And, uh, during the last session this winter for some bylaw changes, uh, the council did approve us to do this legally. It was effective at ten, which I guess was a week ago today. And, uh, getting a form together of what we forgot to do or didn't do during the hearing process is ask the council to set the fee. And that is always up to the council. The fee for this can change in the future if the council wants to increase it. It only requires an act of the council to change, to modify the fee. We don't have to change the bylaw. The other thing in the bylaw, you won't find this certificate. Nor will you find a permit. The bylaw itself authorizes us to have them, uh, so they're separate, and they do occasionally get modified without a bylaw change, as long as we comply with what the bylaw allows us to do.
I have a question. So, if, I assume this is for both, um, commercial and residential? So, if I, say, had a duplex, I had a tenant move out, and I wanted to re-rent my unit, would I have to submit an application for the new tenant before they could move in?
Not for residential. Okay. Uh, we don't ask a certificate for each new tenant or residential rental. For commercial, yes. But for residential, people move in and out all the time, the building is still residential, your landlord still has responsibility for the water, all the other issues, and so on. So, no, that would be kind of burdensome, especially in some of the high-rent neighborhoods, the high changeover, and you get a... But in commercial property, yeah. In commercial, by the way, begins as soon as you have a duplex. No, you wouldn't have residential, all right? You still don't have to have a change for the residential tenant. But for other processes, like a fire marshal's certificate from the state with duplex, it starts there. So, you wouldn't get into, when you built the property initially, uh, you would get into some state permits that are considered commercial. But from our standpoint, uh, if it's a residential rental, the hospital, old hospital building with twenty-seven units would not have to have one of these every time they are in the town. Example.
Okay. Any other questions from council members, then? We don't need a motion to approve?
I'm just a little bit confused as to how the fees work. There's a thirty-dollar fee for the temporary C of O?
No, for permanent.
That's a permanent one. So, where is the ten dollars, the fifteen dollars plus ten dollars?
That would mean if you did not have your property completed, okay? But it was safe to move in, and you wanted to move in and then complete it while you lived there, uh, then we would give a temporary certificate and then charge ten dollars a month for each month until you do complete it.
Gotcha.
Yeah. The one thing that is, I've been thinking about it, window certificate, when we say certificate, that would be, from our zoning regulations, that's the external portion of the building, kind of. Internally, for this, we would also look at your water, your sewer, and health-related issues that just appropriate for you to live in it. Your outside is going to be finished, if it's not finished, et cetera. If you had rooms inside you didn't want to finish off, uh, that would not affect you here.
So, it's only issues of safety and health?
Right.
All right. Any other discussion? We have a motion. We had a motion?
No.
No, we didn't have a motion.
We had a motion to go forward, but no, but we hadn't done the fees yet.
Right, no. I asked for a motion, but then Joe had a question. He threw me for a loop. Yes, so we do need a motion on this. See, you threw me for a loop there. I knew you. So, we need a motion to approve this.
Approving the fees.
That's what I meant, approve the fees.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the, uh, certificate of occupancy fees.
Okay, a motion's been made. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion made and seconded. Any other discussion?
Oh, no, not giving a motion, no.
Okay, then all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
Just one other comment that I don't know, that is in here for this to apply to. We want to go ahead and start requiring it with building demolition. And that's on the bottom page, and put note two, or note two down at the bottom. And right now, the people, we don't require anything firm if somebody wants to tear a building down. And, uh, all this would do, in case of demolition, is it would close on the property. It would assure that water and sewer were shut off. Uh, it also would notify the assessor to remove the building from the tax rolls. We've had cases that people were taxed on buildings that had been going down because the assessor didn't know on April 1st, there was no one in there. And we do have a lot of problems with water and sewer not being officially disconnected. So, it's really more of a closure issue, if you will, on a property that's being demolished. There's no real requirement, they have to be, other than say they're gonna demolish it and, uh, make sure that the closure is done with the utilities, et cetera.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
The next item is the Local Emergency Operations Plan. This is the annual document, which we must approve.
There's no place to sign this. It needs to be noted in the minutes, assuming that it will need council approval. Um, standard document. If you have any questions?
I don't have a post-page number.
Yeah.
To sign them.
I don't think there's a place to sign it. Maybe I have to put it in the minutes. See, it has to be a doctor.
Oh, that's right, yeah, they change it, yeah.
They change it again?
Yeah, you don't have to pay.
So, we'll put a copy of the minutes.
Did anybody have any questions on this? This is something, go ahead.
Um, I'm wondering about the annual updates, because I noticed that Bill Revert is listed for North Country.
The new, the new one is, should be on the copy that I gave you, unless it did print off, but I'm confused. It's the new principal interim this year. And next year will be the actual principal. Same, the, they just got the new principal for the elementary school, cause I call every daycare, and make sure they're still in business, and make sure that everybody's still on board with the emergency shoppers.
Well, the childcare issue is actually what I was most concerned about. So, you checked with ones that were in business last year, but how do you determine what new ones have opened?
We went up through the list, and then, basically, um, like, we know, I know one closed, one that used to be at the, you know, the church. She's no longer there, she's at the therapy. We don't do anything with therapy. So, we basically, when I call the, the state and say, "How many do you, how many child daycares do you have?", or, "Would the state?", because you have state registered, and they're private. We just have to deal with the state registered, because that's how it's put in there.
Am I missing cuddly cubs on the list?
They're closing. From what she told me, when I called, it just said that they're closing. Like, immediately.
That was the one on the rock side?
It was over at Hot Rocks and up there.
Right, I heard they were closing.
I hope we don't have an emergency if they change their mind.
I don't think they're going...
Okay, so, we have a corrected copy with the sub-oh for the high school?
Yes.
Is that what you have, Laura?
Uh, mine is showing Bill Revert. But you may have another one. Jamie, this is printed off. You can easily make that change.
I probably gave you the one I was calling on the daycare example.
Okay.
Because there's no maintenance director, and there's the interim principal, um, pocket, just anything like that.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I've moved to accept the Local Emergency Operations Plan with the corrections as provided by Chief Leclerc.
Motion been made. Is there a second? Second made, seconded. Any discussion on that? And all of the favor say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next item is the website quote, invoke. Laura gathered some more information?
Yep. Couple of questions remain from last, from our last meeting's presentation. How much is this site anticipated to cost after three years? Um, the city has four options. You may renew the original agreement for four to six, for years four through six at the same annual rates as years one, two, three. That means we'd be insulated from any rate increase for six years at renewal. Um, the company will repeat all of the services included in the original agreement, including development of a totally responsive style design. We may not, um, renew if that's what we choose, and, um, we could enter into an entirely new three-year agreement if that meets our needs then. Um, it could, the annual charge could be greater or less than that amount. We won't, and we're gonna get there, and we can opt out. So, um, we've got those options available to us after three years. We can cancel. And, uh, somebody wanted to know if there was a cap on how many hours of technical assistance we could receive, and the answer is there's no limit. So, we're not gonna get charged hourly rate if we use them, if, or if we overuse them. And those are the only questions that we're outstanding.
Other questions?
Yes. Me being the most computer-illiterate person in the world, it does nothing online. I've come and seen people in person and pay them. I believe a question was brought up last time about, uh, however you do this, and you can, you pay online, and then, I believe out of the treasurer's office, when you consolidate, if you, if your deadline was Friday for your taxes, and you paid them on Thursday, but he doesn't get the paperwork back from whoever till Monday, does he issue late fees? And I believe, uh, James mentioned something about, uh, every time you use this, there's a, there's a cost, I guess, just like a credit card. And the question at that time was, who sucks up the cost? Is the city? And then, if everybody in the whole city started to use this payment thing, are we sucking up, uh...
We decided not to go with the payment thing.
We did.
We did, yeah.
So, we're gonna do this without?
Without the payment.
It's all bad.
Yeah, yeah, we decided in the last meeting to forego the payment.
Because there were more problems involved that were brought up. This was just gonna be the website?
Just the website, yeah. We've decided to...
I don't have a problem with a website.
Right. Did you have something, Karen?
Yeah, I've been working with groups across the kingdom on the website, and one question that comes up that you may consider regarding the opt-out piece is whether there's anything proprietary with this organization that you're working with, so that if you do decide to opt out, you can take your information with you to a new website. If there's something proprietary to the company you're working with, you're limited as to what you can take. So, that's just a key piece to find out, is whether there's anything proprietary in the contract to that particular organization. That may affect your, your thinking on it.
Well, the leader cities in town recommends it, because they don't do that, but we can't be sure.
Thank you for that. Shall we wait to the next meeting, then?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion, we table it for the next meeting until we can get an answer to that.
Okay. Okay, so a motion been made to table this to the next meeting. Is there a second?
Sure, sorry.
Okay, motion been made and seconded to table this until the next meeting so we could get the question answered and promise of proprietary. All those, any of this, then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Okay, so we'll have this at the next meeting.
That's from there.
Okay, is that yours? Oops, I'll use that check. Okay, the next item is water and sewer allocation. We've received a request. The paperwork, from what I can tell, has been filled out completely. It's for a property located on Stonewell, Stone Wall, and it's a residence. It's a new connection. Single-family home. Estimated flow is 210 gallons per day. Can't quite read the photocopy. Will the strength of wastewater be typical domestic wastewater? Yes. Let's see. This is preliminary and 210 gallons a day and we know we have the allo, we have the allocation for that. And then we have the application for the water allocation turn-on for residents and that's $30. And so the total, sewer fee with sewer fee of 30, a 25, 20, what's the 25, 20?
That's the 12 cents a gallon.
12 cents a gallon, okay.
Preliminary.
Preliminary and then the water, so the total is $82.20 and we received a check in that amount. So I don't believe they missed anything on the application. You see anything they might have missed, Mr. Chenet? You're very good at finding possible things they missed, but I don't think they did. Everything's fine, okay. So we would need a motion to approve this request.
So?
Motion been made. Is there a second?
No second.
Seconded. Any further discussion on this? Then all those in favor say aye. All those? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Either side of this. Okay. Moving on. New business, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I got to pull the, pull the liquor license, it's got to be signed. You can do that while you're, just got to think something else. It'll take a while. So go ahead on, let me just pass it down on.
Okay.
They've all, the chiefs agreed with all of them, so.
The chief's okay with them all, okay. New business?
Well, I wonder if it would be appropriate as a council just to express our sadness and grief over the loss of Cynthia Moore who passed away a couple of days ago. She has done a lot of great work in this community and it's a huge loss.
Yes, it is. Cynthia, Cynthia Jean, the driving force of the Jazz Festival. There's a huge loss for the community. Anything else? Any, anything?
Just to make sure folks put the May 13th household hazardous waste event on their calendars.
Old business, Mr. Johnson?
No.
I'd like to thank Tom and his crew for fixing that drainage.
It broke.
Yeah, it broke. Thank you. A gentleman walked by today that had initially brought the complaint and he said, "Great job," so thank you. Anything else?
Just on our old business, we've been reviewing the contract with the Green Lantern for the net metering. And at this particular point in time, our attorney is recommending that we not move forward with that because there are specific details on the pricing terms and net metering credits that are not included in the contract. So that's going to be a work in progress.
Mr. Wilson?
You want some of these up there now?
Yeah, might as well. Pass them all down till we sign them.
There's two places to sign them.
Excuse me. Thank you.
I called them all today.
You called them all?
Called them, had to have them.
Yeah, I was going to say, your time is running out on these.
Mr. Mayor, since my esteemed colleague isn't here, I ask, are any of those liquor licenses for new?
No. Okay, thank you. Okay, this one has two pages. There's one page on this one?
Some of those, one, three, four.
Oh. Oh, okay.
So these are annual?
Yeah. I've got a couple businesses that forget. They can't sell liquor over the weekends. And then it's a good pen. But they're all in there this time.
There's a flag in your calendar that reminds you when everybody's asleep.
When it gets to the last meeting of the month, I call them up.
Laura, we still need these on our motion?
It would probably be a good idea to use.
Do you have, do we get to do the specific language? Do you have the language? Because I don't remember it.
It's in the minutes, isn't it?
What?
The executive session, the executive session.
Are you not comfortable with them?
Oh.
Yes, it was.
I carry that.
Two for jazz. Two?
One for the cheese, the other for the.
One for the cheese. Or else it's outside for something.
Yeah, because they, they set up.
Actually, you signed this.
Oh, so that's an extra 15?
Yeah. They, no, jazz. They set up outside, I guess, outside now. Yeah, sometimes we get special, he's talking. The east side, once in a while, we'll come for the side one, they have, they have to get a special.
Those are catering.
Liquor catering.
Okay. So. Anything else? Then we need a motion for an executive session? Oh, sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself, yes. The next regular scout council meeting is May 1st, 2017. And then the centennial planning committee meeting will be May 15th, 2017. So now we need a motion to go in executive session?
Uh, question?
Who asked a question?
No, I misheard something. Sorry. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the board's specific findings, the premature general public knowledge of the subject of the anticipated executive session would clearly place the board and/or persons involved at a substantial disadvantage.
So a motion been made. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Made by, made and seconded, discussion? Yes?
Before we go into executive session, I fully appreciate your desire not to give away your strategic advantage. But at the last minute meeting, there was a motion made to send a delegation to speak with the trustees in Derby Center. I received a copy of the minutes of that meeting and was surprised that there was no mention of that delegation being received at the meeting. I was wondering, since both you and people who are your presumable opponents in whatever action might be taken are aware of what happened at that meeting, whether you could share a summary of what the issues are at that point without, of course, giving away your deep designs?
I don't think so because we've been instructed to go into executive session tonight by our attorney. So I'd be hesitant to.
You know, there, if the reason to go into executive session is to avoid revealing things that the other parties don't know, I don't see how there could be any damage done. I mean, I am perfectly willing if there is something that is deemed questionable. But I have noticed that your opponents have been merrily speaking to the press about this. So it is not as if this has remained secret.
I'm not in a position to quantify their accuracy on anything.
I wasn't interested in that because you weren't at the meeting.
We're in negotiations, gentlemen.
I understand that, but the situation, the situation can be described without discussing things that would disadvantage the, the city. I mean, that seems perfectly logical. I mean, I'm certainly not asking you to say, you know, we would be glad to settle this if they brought us a huge truck full of cash and dumped it in the parking lot. I mean, but just what happened at that meeting, since they, you know, it seems that is something that could be spoken of since you did vote in open session to attend the meeting.
Did you get a copy of their minutes?
Did I get a copy of?
The village trustees' minutes?
Yes, I did.
Okay. So assuming that they're going to approve those, I mean, that should be enough. I'm not, I, I'm not going to take a chance of risking where we are in the negotiation and I, feel free to challenge me because I, I'm not going to do any more tonight. I, we have an executive session to do. I'm going to conduct business in executive session out of exactly what the motion read, which is, I am concerned that premature general public knowledge of the subjects of the anticipated executive session tonight would clearly place the board and/or persons involved at a substantial disadvantage.
And I hear, I understand what you're saying, Ms. Logan. And with the utmost respect, I would suggest that it's a decision that's properly made by the council. I, I understand that you have every, a duty to, to advise them, but I'd still like to ask the council if they are willing to say more.
The only thing I'm going to say is I don't negotiate in the press. Per the trustees on their side seem so willing to go to the newspapers all the time. This is not how I operate. I hope it's not how the council operates, by negotiating in the press. Because that's exactly what's been happening. And on the advice of our attorney, he recommends an executive session so we can have strategy. And that's all I'm going to say. Personally, I'm not privy to what has been in the press that you've seen, so I'd like to find out in the executive session.
Well, I mean, can't blame you for trying.
Once it's all done and dusted, we'll write a tell-all book and we'll give you the rights to it.
No, thank you. No, thank you. My, my life is exciting enough as it is.
The issue that I would like to raise is that you formally set up a negotiating committee. The committee went and talked to the trustees in open session. At the end of the meeting, the village trustees took action by going into an executive session, came out and took further action by saying that this is what the proposal and their timeline was. It's my understanding, I call it the Secretary of State, you guys have to have minutes of that meeting as well. Even if it was in, in executive session, it would still be something that would tell the public that you had an executive session meeting. But the meeting actually wasn't public, so all the strategy that was discussed then is already fully disclosed. But what I wanted to know from the city council, which is why I wanted their minutes, was what action did the city council propose, not the city council sign, the negotiating committee? What action, if any, did they take coming out of that meeting? Because the village trustees don't address what you did. They only addressed the discussions at the meeting and then the action they took after. I believe if you check with Secretary of State's office, they'll tell you that you were required to have minutes at that meeting out in public. Now, I could be wrong, but I did talk to a person there and that's the advice they gave me. As long as you were a formal negotiating committee, you had a quorum and you represented the city council.
We did not have a quorum of the council.
Not of the council, a quorum of the negotiating committee.
My understanding that we did not have to take minutes of a negotiating as a committee. That is my understanding. We were there as two members of the council, but we were not there. We were the negotiating committee and as my understanding, we do not have to take minutes.
Yeah, I'll double check again at the same time for Jim Conves. And if I find something different, I'll forward that information with the city.
But as I stated before, I do not negotiate in the newspaper.
I'm not asking you to.
And that's how, well, that's what the other side, I'm going to say is that's what the other side seems to want to do. We do not negotiate in the newspaper.
Yeah, the simple thing that I'm looking for is what action, the type of things that were taken and it was done in an open session. So it's not, again, you guys don't have to turn around and say that negotiation could be compromised in the negotiating open session for an hour or two.
They warned their meeting as an executive session.
It was warned, but it was, but it was held an open session until the very end. And then, again, the trustees voted to go in executive session, which I don't believe, including the negotiating committee from the report.
Well, it's my impression that we were in an executive session the way the meeting was warned.
In the minutes.
No, I know, but if you look at the warning of their meeting, it was warned as an executive session.
Yeah, it was.
And I was under the impression it was an executive session. So all of a sudden, what happened, you have to talk to them because they warned their meeting as an executive session. And then they made a motion to adjourn their meeting and we left. So for them on the spot, they adjourned. Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
O's? We're going in executive session.